KTOP, we are ready. Please start. Welcome and thank you for joining us today, September 21st, 2024. My name is Teresa Nelson and I'm a volunteer and member of the League of Women Voters of Oakland. We are pleased to have as our partners today: AAUW Oakland Piedmont Branch, Alameda County Bar Association, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Asian Immigrant Women Advocates, Center for Elder's Independence, Centro Legal de la Raza, East Bay Housing Organizations, National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Oakland Violence Prevention Coalition, Piedmont Pines Neighborhood Association, and SPUR. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, nor take positions on issues or ballot measures. Before we introduce the candidates, I have a few logistical items to review. The candidates and our community partners have all agreed to participate under the guidelines set for this forum. The candidate forums today are being televised by KTOP, Oakland's cable access station, and livestreamed on the city's website, That's O-A-K-M-T-G. The forums are also being recorded and can be viewed later on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website or our YouTube channel. The recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Oakland and filming or recording these sessions by anyone other than KTOP is not permitted. We are hosting in-person candidate forums for 13 Oakland races over two Saturdays, today and on October 5th. We are presenting eight sessions today and the remaining five on Saturday, the 5th, here in City Hall. The full schedule can be found on the poster outside the door here at City Hall or on our website, This session is for the position of school board member for District 3 of the Oakland Unified School District. There are two candidates running for this position. They are Dwayne Akins Jr. and Van Cedric Williams. The candidates participating today met the criteria for participation according to our protocols and ground rules, which you can find on the table outside for reference. Here's our process for this forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening remarks. The speaking order has been randomly assigned. Candidates will then have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. If, and please keep an eye on the timekeepers seated here, who will signal you with different colored signs marked 30 seconds remaining and stop. As moderator, I may verbally give these prompts as well as needed. There are no separate rebuttals, but you may choose to use some or all of your one and a half minutes to rebut the response given by another candidate. And following the questions, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement in the reverse order from the opening statements. We'll be handling the questions for the candidates in the following way. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League of Women Voters and our partners. We will also take questions from you, the live audience. If you would like to ask a question, raise your hand and one of our volunteers will give you an index card to write the question. Please keep your questions succinct and directed to all the candidates, not to individual candidates. We'll try and include as many of your questions as time allows. Before we begin, candidates, in order to be heard on KTOP's broadcast, please turn on your mic by pushing the on button in front of you and speaking directly into your microphone. When you are done speaking, please be sure to return your mic to the off position. Now, let's begin with our first candidate, Mr. Akins. Please give us your opening statement.
Can you hear me all right? Okay, so Dwayne Akins, Oakland native, graduate of Oakland Unified School District Schools, Emors Cox, Amherst, Casamot, and Oakland Technical High School is where I finished. I was in the Health Academy. I went to Xavier University of Louisiana where I received the degree in psychology, minor in special education. I moved back to Oakland, California in 2005 after Hurricane Katrina hit. I worked at Ascend School, teaching physical education, and there I started a young men's group, Men at Power Strategically, where I worked with young men to develop a leadership program on campus for several of the kids that were getting in trouble. That later turned into my nonprofit business organization, We Lead Ours, which I launched off of Reach Academy campus, my old school elementary campus. I've been in business for 14 years. Some of the things about me that I do locally, I'm former Keep Oakland Beautiful Board Member, former Park Commissioner. I'm currently on the Sugar Tax Advisory Commission, currently on BART Title VI Environmental Justice Advisory Commission, former Secretary of Alpha Phi Fraternity Incorporated, and on Oakland Parks and Rec Foundation Board of Directors, as well as Oakland Strokes. I'm committed to leadership work and I've been doing this work for 19 years. I'm passionate about it. I do my job, most of it for free, and I'm here, ready to serve, and it's time for me to step up. That's why I'm running for this seat.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I am Van Cedric Williams, 24-year educator. I actually born in Los Angeles, went to school at San Diego, San Diego State, and moved up to San Francisco in 2000. Ever since, I've been teaching as an opening day sub. Prior to that, I was a classified professional in San Diego. That is what really, really got me interested in being a teacher. Moved up to San Francisco, started as an opening day sub, and haven't stopped teaching since. I've been very fortunate to teach in the Bayview Gloria Davis Middle School, Willie Brown, Thurgood Marshall, Galileo. So I've been the high school teacher for the last 12 years. I've taught 9 through 12 history. I actually have been a executive union officer for United Educators of San Francisco for four years. And I have actually been very fortunate to be a regional director for the California Teachers Association, Northern California overseeing 109 locals and 16,000 members from San Francisco up to the Oregon border. The work that I do is really centered around our curriculum and really lifting up our educators to be the best educators themselves, so our students will get the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll begin with the questions, and the first one will go to Mr. Williams. What experience do you have working collaboratively with your constituents or your community to further education in Oakland?
Thank you very much for that question, Ms. Nelson. So the experience that I have, I've been working with local community orgs throughout Oakland, worked with Oakland Rising. I've worked with Stephanie Parrott Mandela Parkway and cleaning up Mandela. I've continued to work with other organizations that continue to fuel education amongst our community. One actually coming to mind is the, is the labor unions for 1020. We have community orgs that go out and educate our families. I've worked with the reparations for black students as well. So generally, as an educator and as a community member, I have continued to work with organizations that do fundamental groundwork at, from door-to-door level in West Oakland, which is educating our families, our students, and our families about Oakland Unified School District and how to navigate the system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Akins?
I love collaboration. I'm the executive director of We Lead Ours nonprofit organization. I've partnered with the Oakland Unified School District now 14 years. While partnering, as I listed out earlier, some of the boards and directors that I serve on to support. The reason why I picked those things to support is because they allow me to expand my nonprofit work. So I've partnered with probably every city council member to do constructive programming. During the pandemic, for sure, we did, we did free tennis and rowing clinics at Brookdale Park, which is still going on, where we had everybody from Mia Banta, Sheng Tao, Janani. Everybody pulled up and showed up to these activities, just doing something constructively. My greatest accomplishment, I feel like, was also during the pandemic when I partnered with Libby Schaff's office to bring Youth Civic Engagement Day to where we were able to interact with all the students, get them actively participating in civics, and we were also able to give each kid that participated $25 DoorDash gift cards. My work is always collaborative. I believe that you have to work through succession planning, meaning working with all the stakeholders so that you can have a successful product on the table. And I believe that's what the Oakland Unified School District is missing, is a collaborative workforce. We need to stop with the divisiveness and people need to get on the same page and we need to work for our kids.
Thank you. And we'll just be going back and forth, each of you starting the next question, so that will be Mr. Akins. OUSD projects continuing large budget shortfalls in the coming years. How will you prioritize the way to manage this budget shortfall?
Again, go right back to the succession planning. We have to get all of the stakeholders that's at the table supporting OUSD in some capacity. We have to start asking those type of questions, and then we also have to leverage resources within Silicon Valley. Like, how do we stop just depending on grants? Are the taxpayers, and how about let's leverage? Again, I started a nonprofit organization, successful, with $500 donation. I have yet to be funded by the federal government. I have yet to be funded by the state. I have yet to be funded by the city of Oakland. I pitch and create contracts to support not just myself, but other individuals that work for me and support my nonprofit. We have to be a little creative in Oakland and stop thinking like a small town and start thinking like a big city, and how do we leverage and utilize our spaces? Another thing, we have access to property. And so what we need to do is we need to start thinking about how can we bring the community partners that partner with Oakland Unified School District into those spaces so that they can actually run a program, just not during the school day, but year-round to support our cities and our communities. But we gotta be creative. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. You know, that's been a big challenge for Oakland for the last 20 years, is getting this budget right. I really think that we really have to start with an reorganization of our central office. I mean, we really have to look at what are the needs that our central office staff are, have, and how is it directly benefiting our kids? It's really important for us to have a single-minded focus and prioritize our young folks. The budget in itself, as well, is actually moving very close to being able to pay off our state loan that we've had for over 20 years. We're two years away from doing that, which is really gives us an opportunity to control the budget ourselves. For so long, we've been under a mandate from Alameda County in regards to what we can and cannot do. And we really have to go ahead and be in control of our budget. We just have not been in control over the last 20 years. So it's really important that we focus in on that. Second, I think we really need to look at the partnerships within the community. We have schools, vacant lands that we can lease out to community members as well. It just really takes some joint ventures with the city and the county to really effectively use our properties in a way that will bring additional revenue to our school sites. But we really have to start with using a community process, which means we bring the community members in and actually start to decide where we need to be and how our budget should go. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll start with you for the next question, which is: How would you work with all stakeholders on the complicated topic of school closures and mergers?
Thank you. So, there's been a proposal of us looking at redesign and restructuring. I think the first thing that we have to do again is we have to really reach out to the community and find out how does these proposed mergers, restructuring, or redesign affect community members? We have a long history of making decisions without engaging the community. And so we really have to actually first do our due diligence, which is in each district, have not one or two town halls in regards that we invite parents out and have a conversation of what that looks like. We also should be talking to staff in regards to what that looks like and talk to our city council members. You know, I think this is a broader process that should be engaged upfront, and then we start to take these ideas and come up with ways to improve our schools. So, number one is just really having a community-centered process in any discussion for school closures. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Akins?
Yeah, so, we have to, we have to do a lot of communication and being very transparent. One thing that I've already pledged to do when I get elected is to make sure that I have monthly town halls with the people that I want to represent in District 3, so that they can know and learn about everything that's on the upcoming agenda, calendar, what are some tough areas, and we can have some real conversation. I think so many people, even me being one of those people before I got involved in commissions and boards, would get rattled and get very upset because you hear stuff from the news and you don't hear it from your elected officials. And I feel like right now, more than any in the city of Oakland, regardless of school board, but across political races, we need to see champions outside representing their districts, not being afraid to show up at tough spaces and just be present and be there. We have to do a better job being transformational leaders. I feel like that's why I'm the person for the job, because I actually go outside, do the work. I serve on all these boards. Kids that have ran away from their houses have end up in my living room sleep on the floor because I'm connected to, I'm connected to the work. And their parents like, "Mr. Akins, is he at your house?" Yes, he's here. Right? I'm that type of person. I was raised here. I grew up where you knew your neighbors, and so I'm ready to do the work.
Thank you. And Mr. Akins, you'll get to start the next question. Ensuring strong readers by 3rd grade is a very important priority in Oakland Unified and a key goal in the district's three-year strategic plan. Which approaches do you believe are the most effective to help the district and our district's children to reach this goal? Mr. Akins?
I got a couple of ideas that can help, but I'm not gonna be my over-creative nonprofit community curriculum development mind frame. But what we need to do is get everybody that's doing literacy work and tutoring work at the table together. Those succession plannings are key. And then from there, you build out a realistic phase plan. We also need to make sure that the curriculum design that we're giving our kids is cultural and creative and where people, where kids want to read the books and where people, that they want to get involved with it. They need to fill it. I have this great idea to where we could partner with like a Mr. Fab. We can partner with some other artists like Keisha Cole. Get their voices on these books and they're creating, they're creating the curriculum. And these kids know them, so they want to read that. They're gonna pick that book up. We gotta be creative around curriculum design. It's not that our kids don't want to read. Some of them don't even know why they've been, why they're taking all these tests. So we have to, we have to educate them there to let them know that this says that you can't read. Can you read? And someone will be like, "Yeah, I can read. I'm gonna step it up. I don't want to be this label. I want to be above the standard deviation." Right? I was one of those kids. I took the, I took the report card out and I said, it said, it said I can't read. And I start busting my butt and doing a good job, and now I got an MBA and working on a doctorate degree.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Yeah, fundamental about reading is that it starts earlier than elementary. It's gonna start at TK. Our kids are learning to identify words. And a lot of times, what we tend to have is that our young folks are coming into grade level, at their grade, below grade level. And so we really have to really think strategically on how we're going to incorporate reading at a very early age. I would say, one, you want to make sure you have an instructional aid in the classroom that will assist teachers. Right now, we're really putting a lot of pressure on early education teachers by having them teach 20-plus kids, 28 at times, and it's really challenging to do so. I would say we want to focus on making sure we have instructional aids supporting our educators. Two, we really want to start on early development of reading. We know that there are exams that are taken in the 3rd, 4th, 5th grade that actually will predict who will be going to our prison system. And if our kids are learning to read at a young age and they get it down, then they have a greater success as they matriculate up through high school. But if they're still in high school and they're still learning to read and not reading to learn, then we're really gonna have a challenge. So I would say we want to actually invest at a time that, that most impacts our young folks and builds a strong foundation for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll start again with you, Mr. Williams. Charter schools are often discussed as being in competition with OUSD and related to poor student learning objectives or outcomes, budget issues, declining enrollment. But of course, there are many reasons that people choose other school districts, public charters, or even private schools. To address this, what would you prioritize at the policy level to help with student learning outcomes, A through G completion, and college, students being able to go to and complete college? Mr. Williams?
Thank you. So, yes, I think charter schools have been intermingled with public schools, but we know they're actually a charter. When our particular school district was taken over by the state, it gave an opportunity for charter schools to come in and start to run a business. What we really are talking about, I believe, is accountability on an academic level as well as a financial level. And I think we, as a school district, should actually be holding charters to the same standard that public schools have. What we have actually is a democratic process where we elect our board directors. Charters have an appointed board, and so they have folks that are more connected to those who appoint them to run the school for profit. I think what we really should be focusing on is using the state laws at hand, which is AB 1505, 1507, and also having our tough conversations with charter renewals. Have our particular school district office, charter management office, do the investigation and do the research to prepare board members to make decisions that will either, you know, help charter schools get better or actually have them blend in, come back to the school district, and actually get support by the public schools. So I think there are some challenges there, and we should really keep a mandate moratorium on any more charter growth. Thank you.
Mr. Akins?
Yeah, great question. What we have to do is we have to, certainly accountability is everything, and we have to follow the state laws, and we have to have those tough conversations for sure. But one thing that we have to stop doing is we have to stop dividing charter and public schools and making it this divisive community. I attended Emors Cox Elementary School, and that's where I kicked off my nonprofit work. And you have Reach Academy on one side, and you have Cox Academy on one side, and you had kids there that felt like they were better than the other kids at Reach Academy. And y'all stay in the same apartment complex. Y'all going through the same type of experiences. So when we're thinking about designing schools and where we're putting schools, we need to be strategically smarter about it. That's a bad idea to put two elementary schools on the same campus with each other. It's a smarter idea to perhaps elementary, more resources, so public. Charter schools have more access to these other things. That can be like a magnet middle school. We have to be a little bit creative around curriculum design and placement and partnerships. They gotta start doing PDs together. If this school is working, if this school is working, they're reading above average, and these kids over here is not reading above average, whether it's public or charter, they're all OUSD schools, so we need to make sure that all of them are work so that our kids are graduating, they able to compete in this global-changing economy. You got a hard job.
Thank you. And now it's time for our last question, a topic that has been much in the media lately. And we'll start with Mr. Akin. What is your position on limiting students' cellphone usage during school hours?
I was once at a event where I received a community grant, and this, I don't know what technology they use, but you cannot use your cellphone that day at a Royal Park. I could not access my cellphone. I couldn't do anything. But we really need to, we really need to prioritize it, and the whole district gotta get on board. It gotta come from the top, and it gotta matriculate down, and everybody gotta be on message. It can't just be one teacher holding the cellphone policy. Every teacher, every support staff have to hold the cellphone policy. I just expanded services this year to Marin County. And we understand the difference when it comes to money in Marin, right? But when you walk to the school, when you walk into the school, that first period, speaker goes off, morning announcement, and this is in middle schools. The kids get on, they say the goals, they checking their cellphones in the little, in the pouch. And if they get caught using those cellphones during the school day, they have to actually turn it into the office. And they don't get their, they don't get their cellphone back until after school. But we recognize safety is a big issue in our community, so parents want to connect with their kids. But the cellphone policy also need to go in the teachers. The teachers need to get off their cellphones at school too. And they need to actually run, manage their class, and not be texting during class time. Everybody gotta be on page about the cellphone policy. And that's gonna be a very tough thing to solve in a city like Oakland, really because of safety.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. So, you know, one of the things that I'm very hopeful with Oakland Unified is that we've really been moving a community schools model. And that really means bring all stakeholders to the table. I mean, I think that is a conversation that everyone should actually have a particular say in. And with that, we need to really educate our members at that table about what the benefits are and what the pros and cons are, and really have an engaging discussion to see what best works for that particular school. I think that is really where we need to go in those conversations. And that holds true for a lot of different decisions that come down, our school closures or school redesign, additional resources, you know, our unhoused student, our foster youth. What we really should be utilizing is our community schools model to engage these tough conversations. And it really is intention upon each school site to reach out to the parent to actually say, "We're inviting you in so we can talk about these hot topic issues, so we can get your ideas and assessments of what it really takes. And then we're gonna partner our staff, our students, and, you know, community orgs as well in regards to how do we address this." So I wouldn't want it to be a top-down board policy issue, but I would want us to really utilize the relationships we have in the community with our families to make the decisions for our students. Thank you.
And now, we'll have the candidates make their closing statements. They will each have one minute, and we'll begin with Mr. Williams.
Oh, thank you very much. So, I'm here running for reelection for the Oakland School Board. I feel like we've actually done some good work in Oakland, District 3. We've been able to advocate with family, with parents, as well as community. $91 million that's going to McLeimets for renovation. McLeimets has been used multiple times for school bonds, and the district has not prioritized McLeimets. When I've gotten on the board, I've been able to actually continue, get the focus and prioritize, prioritize our, our board members to allocate. We've also brought $9 million to West Oakland Middle School as well. We're doing the work. Each of our schools in the district actually are creasing in academic participation and scores. And overall, we're building a strong community school system. We're looking for our kids to matriculate from elementary all the way through McLeimets, which has been a historically black school, but also just a school of legends. We feel it's a really strong opportunity to continue to build our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Akins?
So, again, Dwayne Akins, I'm running for school board to represent District 3. I've been doing this work for 19 years. If we count the numbers of years I've been doing it before I was a professional, I've been doing this work since I was 14 years old. been doing this work since I was 14 years old, when I graduated from Emor, I mean, Amherst Middle School. I'm committed to servicing our community. If you check out my website and you've seen anything that I do, you see that I'm always progressively working on improving our city, improving our communities, and it's time for our kids to see people that look like them, that represent them, that understand what they're going through, to be there, to be there and to be that leader. I feel like I'm an effective leader, collaborator. I'm not negative. I'm not spiteful. I build people up, and I want to bring that into local politics. I feel like that's what we're missing. Our city is divided, and we need to make sure that we have leaders that's gonna do the best for our city. Thank you guys for inviting me. Appreciate it.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Oakland and our community partners who are listed on the screen, I want to thank the candidates. We are very grateful for your participation today. We also want to thank the audience for your questions, for coming to meet the candidates this day. This forum will be rebroadcast on KTOP, Oakland's Government Access Cable Channel, on Channel 10 on Xfinity Comcast, or Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. The recordings will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website, lvwocland.org/decide, and will also be on our YouTube channel. For more information about upcoming forums, the candidates, and the ballot measures, please visit the League's website. We encourage you to individually visit vote411.org. This is the League's award-winning personalized voter resource. You can see what will be on your personal ballot and find expanded information about the candidates and the ballot measures. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to defend democracy and empower voters. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the women and men, helping to make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the League. We encourage you, again, to visit our website, lvwocland.org. You can follow us on Facebook, on Instagram, Twitter, X, and our YouTube channel. Look for our voter education materials, such as the Easy Voter Guides, pros and cons about the measures, and more that are distributed in print and online, and most of these are available in multiple languages. Election Day is November 5. If you have moved, or changed your name, or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you will need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. It is secure and easy. The deadline to register to vote is October 21, 2024. In Alameda County, every voter will be mailed a ballot. Then, you can vote early at one of the 24 vote centers around Oakland, vote by mail by filling out your ballot and making sure you have signed the outside of the envelope, return it via US mail, no postage required, or drop it off at one of the many Dropbox locations around Oakland. Please encourage your family, friends, coworkers, and neighbors to vote. In Alameda County, if you miss the October 21 deadline, you may still register conditionally and vote provisionally in person at the Registrar and Voters Office, or at any one of the many vote centers throughout the county. For this, you can find out more at acvote.alamedacountyca.gov. This concludes our forum. Thank you very much.